Good evening and welcome to the Cabarrus County Board of Education's Monday night, May the 3rd, 2021 work session. The board has just reconvened from closed session and I would ask that you all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Thank you. And now, Board members, I need a motion that we amend the agenda to add a 9.02, which will be to approve the North Carolina School Board Association to initiate the process for the superintendent cert and a 9.03 to advertise an RFP for legal services.
Sam M.
Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Blackwell and a second by Ms. Sandage. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Thank you. So the agenda has now been amended and set and we will start with our report section and I will turn it over to Mr. Brian Schultz, our interim superintendent for the COVID-19 update.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board and the public watching. I'd like to go ahead and give a COVID-19 update, but before I do that, I just want to give you some information. So, we were excited on Friday to be able to announce the graduation. We'll still do it at the Speedway, but we'll do a staged graduation, have a processional. So we're excited about that. We will say that the details of all that are forthcoming. They'll be out on an FAQ on the graduation website, as well as that will come through the typical process through the graduation coordinator at each high school. But I will say that I know there's been a lot of questions about tickets, so I'll just go ahead and clear that one up. There will be at least 10 tickets available to all families for each graduation, so I just want to make sure you all are aware of that. And I will say today, I want to commend staff. We were under a tornado warning for a period of time of about 25 minutes this afternoon and it started out at the lower half of our county under a tornado warning. I guess fortunately and unfortunately, we've had practice of that. If you remember back two Februaries ago, we were in shelter in place in a tornado warning for quite some time and actually had some tornadoes touch down here in Cabarrus County. And I will say that the seriousness with which we take inclement weather is at a very high level and our staff was on it today. So I want to commend the school leaders, the teachers and the students and their quick action on that today and I'm proud of them and proud of their number one priority is student safety, so we're very thankful for that. And we've also, so I have some positive news. That was kind of positive, scary, little scary moments there, but we reacted really well. The positive news is our COVID data. We've seen numbers decrease over the last two weeks. The number of new cases has decreased, was in the low 500s, mid 400s, mid to lower 400s last week and then this, or two weeks ago, and in this past week, we were in the 300s, mid 300s. So we're seeing those new cases decline. That's a leading indicator. And then as we see new cases decline, we see the lagging indicators like hospitalizations, percent positive, that also starts to follow suit, usually a week or two behind. So we're excited about the data. You can see on this slide, the one I'd point out is the very last, lower right-hand corner, the number of active cases decreased by about 100 cases in our county last week and this data is as of Thursday. So you can kind of see those trends where we saw, two weeks after the Easter holiday and spring break, we saw the cases kind of go back up and now we see them coming back down. Same holds true for the percent positive in our county. As of last Wednesday, we're at 7%. That was down from 9%, so we're seeing that come back down as well. And then, this is as of last Thursday, it's ticked up just a little bit, but if you look at the right-hand side of the graph, that shows you the total percent of vaccinations in our county, those who are eligible. So 16 and older, if you're 16, you can receive the Pfizer vaccination. So that's 16 or older, we're at 40, almost 43% now, who have received at least one dose of vaccination and then we're over 30% of our county population who have received the full dosage, two doses, or with the, in case of the Johnson &amp; Johnson, it's a one-dose vaccination. So, just as an advertisement, like I said, I mentioned Pfizer on purpose. If you're 16 years older, 16 and older, you can receive the Pfizer vaccination. We will have that for any student in the county, anyone, even if you don't go to Cabarrus County schools. At West Cabarrus High School this Friday, we have a vaccination clinic there, priority to 16 years old and older. So we need as many as our high school students to get there as possible. There's a lot of benefit in being vaccinated. It keeps you from being quarantined, it keeps you active in being able to come to school face-to-face, keeps you active in your activities that you have, so we'd love as many people to sign up there as possible. That information's on our website and it's also on Cabarrus Health Alliance website as well. So, really excited about that, so let's keep that moving along. And, so the data, so what this reflects is this kind of coming back down from a peak that we had a couple of weeks ago. So you can see the first three metrics that really have to do with cases and you'll see the first one, I'll just point that out, how close some of these are to moving back down into the moderate category. You can see that the cases per day, over 100,000 people for the last 14 days, is right at 25. So as soon as we dip to 24, we'll be back into the blue. I feel, based on the numbers I've seen the last three or four days, I fully expect that to happen. And then you'll, you can see the others that are very close to that, where we'd switch back over to a moderate, the first metric two and metric three are very close as well. We'll see, we talked about the percent positive at 7%, hospitalizations, in-county residents who are hospitalized as of last Thursday was 11. And then, our weekly cases in age group 5 to 17, I was at 85, we, that actually dipped a lot from the previous week, so we're glad to see that come back down and again, close to that, that kind of border number that gets us back into moderate. And then, the cases for the 25 to 64-year-olds, we kind of view those as our caregivers for our students, is at a moderate level as well. And then lastly, evidence of transmission within school buildings, we're in the lowest level possible with that. Schools on Plan C, we do not have any schools on Plan C. And then, the staffing concern, I'll show you that just in a second. I did want to mention that we did have one confirmed cluster at a school last week and that was at Jim Robinson, that was, again, working with the Health Alliance, that was isolated, contained and communicated with every family and every student that was involved with that. So we were, again, thankful for that partnership that we have with them and they have been, and I will also say that our facilities and maintenance services, and I'll point out particularly, Andy Campbell, who is our head of custodians, they made sure every day, regardless of whether they thought it was totally clean or not, every day they went over and did additional cleaning after school during that time. So again, thanks to those guys who, I mean, literally are on the front lines, taking care of business to make sure that our students are safe, so thanks to them. And then, our numbers in terms of quarantines, again, so what you see, I mentioned this before, what you see, once vaccinations became available to staff, you saw the staff numbers dip pretty significantly. As of today, we were at 67 staff members who were quarantined and then you saw the number of students who were quarantined dip by about 50. Again, as we have more students together at schools who are within six feet, or six feet or closer for 15 minutes or more, we are going to have more quarantines and we see that reflected in our numbers since students came back to school post-spring break. So with that, any questions regarding any of our COVID information?
Board members, any comments or questions? Okay, hearing none, thank you. And now, we will move to 6.02, which is our committee reports for board members and I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Adcock for her report on the CNI Curriculum and Instruction Liaison position.
Okay, thank you so much. So we just wanted to make the public aware of these programs, in case you didn't already know about them. The Second Chance EOG/EOC Camp is going to be from June 7th through 9th and this is an opportunity for students who don't score proficient on selected EOG or EOC tests to remediate and then retest. Students who pass the class or course but did not score proficient on the end-of-grade or end-of-course test, and this is by invitation, so those invitations went out April the 23rd. And then, the eligibility subjects and courses and grades are 3rd through 8th grade math, 5th through 8th grade science, Math 1, Math 3 and Biology. And then we also have a summer jumpstart, which is June 10th through July 21st. This was to provide support for students negatively impacted by COVID-19, that's kindergarten through 12th grade. Students who are at risk for academic failure and grade retention and invitations were sent to that as well, April the 23rd. So, transportations and meals are provided for this, as well as additional students will be served if the space is available and there is a waitlist. So if you want your student on the waitlist, then you'll need to do that as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Board members, any comments or questions for Ms. Adcock? Okay, hearing none. We will move to items number seven for the consent agenda for May 10th business meeting. We will start with 7.01 and it's the Construction Manager at Risk Delivery Method and we'll have Mr. Tim Lauder and Mr. Brian Kong to the podium, please.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. Ms. Lauder and I are here this evening to go over a summary of the Construction Manager at Risk Delivery Method for you. Is the, do I have control of that?
No.
Oh, there it is, okay. You can go to the next slide. So what is Construction Manager at Risk? Well, there are three major delivery methods for projects. Those are design, bid, build, which is hard bid, design, build, and then Construction Manager at Risk. The Construction Manager at Risk is a delivery method which entails a commitment by the construction manager to deliver a project within a guaranteed maximum price, or as we call it, a GMP. This is based on the construction documents and the specifications at the time of the GMP, plus any reasonably inferred tasks or items. The CM services are professional in nature, similar to architectural, engineering and surveying. The main purpose of this is for them to not self-perform the work, but to manage the individual trades that are part of the project. This layer of management adds value to the overall project. The Construction Manager at Risk Delivery Method also allows for a more balanced approach to the project as the design team and the construction manager work closely together during the design and development of the project.
Can you say what are the owner benefits of this method? Well, one, we have a higher level of cost control from the beginning to the end of the project. More importantly, at the start of the project, which is most important. Also, Construction Manager is part of the entire design process. He offers his input into the value engineering, to the constructability and anything that sits at elevated material costs and that sort of thing that would cause the price of the project to be over budget. He obviously do that. He also provides a minimum of three pre-construction budgets and pricing exercises to help us understand where we are both at schematic design and then go into full design, so we also know where we are and what stages things cost, so we can do value engineering upfront rather than after bids. Also, the Construction Manager at Risk handles all the bidding on the process. Last, this past project we had, we had 40 bid packages. Each bid package had at least three bidders. Some of them had more, so we actually had 140 bids came in that one day. Everything opened up kind of hectic day, but that's the way you do things. And we've got all the projects, we had three bids for each type of trade or whatever bid package might be out there. Feel like we're going to get a good price there because nothing's hidden. We know exactly what each trade is coming in at. And also, constructability, that's very, very important. I mean, architects enjoy drawing things in a very unique way. Sometimes it's just not as easy to construct and that costs money. And so, the Construction Manager at Risk can help us very early on in the project say, that's very hard to construct, it's going to cost you X number of dollars because of the way it's drawn, the way it's done, the way it's designed. Helps us bring that cost down, so we put out this as some of the major benefits we have with Construction Manager at Risk.
So what does this look like for the Arbrow-McAllister Design and the procurement process for a construction manager? Cabarrus County Schools will advertise and select an architect to begin the programming and schematic design work. At the same time, we'll perform geotechnical site evaluation on the property, that we will provide that information to the design team so they know what the soil conditions are like. Following the following month, we will issue a request for qualifications for firms interested in providing the Construction Manager at Risk services for us. The CM at Risk then will be, the CM at Risk selection will be two months after the architectural team selection. This recommendation will be brought before this board for approval of a selected firm. At that time, we'll begin contract negotiations that we will present to this board for approval in September of this year. Upon that, the CM at Risk firm, Cabarrus County Schools and the architect will begin working through a seven-month-long pre-construction pricing exercise as we work towards the GMP.
As you see through the schedule, we show it's starting in March. Of course, now we're going to start in April or May, so it works out fine. And we have to actually have that back to you and hopefully have a contract for you to select the architect by August of this year, begin our programming and select the Construction Manager at Risk between July and September, which is that couple of months following the architect being onboard. And then, we'll work through permitting from March until April of 2022 and hopefully go to construction with an early bid package in April and then go back to guaranteed maximum price from our Construction Manager at Risk in April and June and then construction begin in July of 2022 and opening in 2024. With that, I guess we have questions?
Yeah, we have to answer any questions you may have about the process.
Okay, board members, comments or questions? I'll start with Ms. Adcock.
Uh, no, I do not have any questions.
Mr. Furr?
No, ma'am.
Mr. Walter?
So we've been pleased with, in the past, so. We've been pleased with using this process before?
Yes, very, very pleased.
Yes, Cabarrus County right now is their preferred method of delivery and they're using it on all their projects right now. We just previously used our last project, this project was Construction Manager at Risk way back a long time ago. But our right, current project right now at Rock River Middle School, Construction Manager at Risk is probably running about as smooth as we've ever had one on the home wood so far, so we're very happy.
That's good to hear, thank you.
Ms. Blackwell?
No questions.
Ms. Sandage?
I don't have any questions, thanks for the presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Have a good one.
So, board members, are you good for this being on the consent agenda?
Good.
Okay, great. Okay, we will move to 7.02, Budget Amendments, and we'll have Ms. Clutz to the podium.
Good evening, board. I believe we have only one budget amendment for you today as federal. We'll pull that up real quickly. The first part of the document is primarily the small changes, year-end changes to our federal programs, but as you go toward the bottom of the page, you will see what we talked about a lot last time with our 171, which is the ESTER 2 and the ESTER 3. So, starting at the bottom of the page, onto the next page, you will see the rest of those ESTER funds as we discussed and that the board approved last time. This is the budget amendment that we talked about to make that official. Any questions on budget amendments?
Board members, comments or questions? I'll start with Ms. Sandage.
I don't have any questions.
Ms. Blackwell?
No, thank you.
Mr. Walter?
No, ma'am.
Mr. Furr?
No questions.
Ms. Adcock?
No questions.
Ms. Carpenter, are you with us?
Uh, no, yeah, I'm with you and I have no questions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I'm assuming consent?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, great. We will move to 7.03, Policy Revisions for Approval on First Reading. We will have Ms. Burns to the podium and this is regarding policy 7205, Standards of Professional Conduct and 7720, Employee, Community and Political Activities. Ms. Burns?
Good evening, board. We have policy 7205, Standards for Professional Conduct, added an excerpt from State Board of Ed policy and added a requirement that employees acknowledge the diverse views of students and shall not proselytize for personal, political or religious viewpoints. And we have policy 7720, Employee, Community and Political Activities. In this one, we added a requirement that employees use good judgment and discretion when discussing political issues with students. Are there any questions?
Board members, comments or questions? Ms. Adcock?
Uh, no, no, thank you.
Mr. Furr?
No, ma'am.
Mr. Walter? Ms. Blackwell? Ms. Sandage? Ms. Carpenter, anything for you?
No.
Thank you. We are good, thank you. Okay, and I'm assuming consent agenda as well?
Yes.
Okay.
So with the second read policies, we had one policy that we are actually going to review, the Curriculum and Instruction Department is reviewing, and we didn't know if you wanted to table this because they're actually ready to bring it to the committee. We weren't sure when that would happen, but you can either vote on it for second read and pass it, or wait for us to bring you the other revisions.
So, I was actually going to hold that one until you were ready, if that's good.
Okay, yeah, yeah.
So I was going to include all of them except for that one, I just didn't read it in time. Okay, is that good? Okay.
Yeah, and there were no other questions on the other ones from anyone.
Great. All right, so just for the viewing audience, I'm going to read that as policy number 3115, Curriculum and Instructional Guidelines.
Actually, it's 3200.
No, I was going to read the ones that we are.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay, that's okay. I'll cover that just to be clear. But what will go on the consent agenda is 3115, Curriculum and Instructional Guides, Frameworks for Instruction. We're going to hold policy 3200, Selection of Instructional Materials. Approval will be 3225-4312-7320, Technology Responsible Use. 3515, Religion in the Schools. 4600, Student Fees. 7200, Professional Standards of Conduct and Performance for Teachers. Everyone, any comments or questions?
3225 and 4600, I'd like on action, please.
3225 and 4600. Okay, does, is that good with everybody else? Okay. Everybody good? Okay, so we will hold on 3200 until after that's reviewed again and then we're going to place 3225 and 7200 up for action. Karina, are you good?
Yes, thank you.
All right. Thank you. And now, we will move to 7.05, which is the 2020-2021 Early College, the Rowan Cabarrus Community College Memorandum of Agreement, and we'll have Mr. Ben Allred.
Good evening. This is our annual MOA. I did want to highlight the programs that it covers. Our two early colleges, Cab Tech and Cabarrus-Canapolis Early College, and also the Career and College Promise Program. So this is facilities use, fees, textbooks, onsite memorandum of agreement between how we work between our two entities. This year, there are no changes other than the ones that Dr. Quillan and I at RCCC caught as small grammatical errors or factual things, but no substantive changes.
Okay, board members, I know you have a copy of that and have reviewed. Any comments or questions? I'll start with Ms. Adcock.
No comments or questions.
Mr. Furr?
No, ma'am.
Mr. Walter?
I appreciate the partnership we have with the Rowan Cabarrus Community College. I think it's a great thing for our students and my students have also taken advantage of it, so it's worked out well.
Ms. Blackwell?
I agree with what Rob said too, so thank you.
Ms. Sandage?
No comments, thanks.
Ms. Carpenter?
I agree 100% and I would say put on consent.
Thank you, thank you. Everyone's good for consent?
Yes.
Okay, we're good. Okay, we're going to move to items under number eight, Consideration or Action for our May 10 business meeting. We will start with 8.01, Approval of Alex, a subscription agreement. We'll have, we'll keep Mr. Allred.
And you get to stand in for Dr. Hill tonight, so. I know this was submitted to the board. A few highlights on that is it's a continued program we use for Math 612. It's a pretty large bill, which is why it comes to the board, because it's over the capacity that can be approved outside of the board due to policy. The Alex did contribute from a grant in kind for us the past few years. That grant has sunsetted, but they continue to provide free materials, which is outlined for you, $63,000 in 2021 and an additional $35,000 in 2122. Do you have any questions?
Board members, comments or questions? I'll start with Ms. Sandage.
No comments from me.
Ms. Blackwell?
No questions.
Mr. Walter?
Is now joining.
Is there a price change since the last time?
The only price change is because we have more students. So, usage was up. We base the quote each year on the actual usage from students. So the usage in the 2021 school year was up, so our predictions for next year go up, but not actual cost per student, no.
Obviously, you're happy with the program or you wouldn't be recommending it. What do we use to measure how successful this is or how good of a tool it is for our teachers?
So, one thing we use is how often it's used. So we look at usage reports, which you meet with Alex, and I look at our 612 Math Facilitator, Carl Sane, looks at that for us all the time and keeps us abreast of how folks are using it. We also look at our math scores. As always, there's lots of proof that, there's very little proof that everything works, but there's a lot of evidence that this helps move our students forward and whenever we ask teachers what they want, they say, "Keep Alex."
Thank you.
Mr. Furr?
No questions.
Cock?
No questions, thank you.
Ms. Carpenter?
Uh, no questions.
Okay, so I'm assuming action or is, are y'all good for consent?
Yes.
Okay, great. Thank you. Okay, and we have moved, 8.02 has now become 9.03, so with that, we will move to 9.01 under our action agenda. And this is the Middle School Realignment Recommendation and we will have interim superintendent Brian Schultz back to the podium.
Good evening once again. So I would like to request the approval of the Internal Planning Team Recommendation for Middle School Realignment as presented on April 12, 2021. And I have with me Frances Lane, she's actually in the back, Alan Samansky is in the back as well, Mr. Cropper and Mr. Whitaker are on the call in the event that you have any questions related to this item. Thank you.
Thank you, and we will start with Ms. Adcock. Comments or questions?
I do not have any comments or questions at this time.
Mr. Furr?
I just got one comment. I'd just like to thank the staff and everyone involved and the commitment they made to try to get this right. That's all I have.
Thank you. Mr. Walter?
This is going to be more than just the middle school realignment, is that correct?
That is correct. The middle school numbers make up the bulk of the percentage of the students that are impacted by it. We are moving some elementary students as well as high school students.
Can you review that? Because all we've been saying is middle school realignment, middle school realignment, there are others.
Absolutely.
Who else gets moved?
Give me just a second to pull up that data. So we have 1,000, based on the Internal Planning Team Recommendation, we have 1,441 middle school students that are impacted by this realignment. We have 132 elementary school students and we have 141 high schools, high school students. And I will add that of those 141 high school students, eight of those we designated as double-impact students who would have been realigned previously, so those eight students will actually have the, they would be impacted the sophomore year of their high school year. they would be impacted the sophomore year of their high school year. So what we'll do as, when they're freshmen, we will offer them the choice of which of two high schools that they will prefer to attend.
I did have a question on relating to high school. There's a group from Concord High that you're moving to West Cabarrus. Concord High obviously is way under, well, under capacity. Why would we take students from a school that's well under capacity and move them to West Cabarrus?
Yeah, it's really a matter of, one of the things we looked at when we, when we moved students in feeder patterns, one of the things that we wanna make sure that, to do is to make sure there's a sizable amount of students moving from one school to another together. So that was not the case for these. And I can't remember, Francis may have to help me with the exact number. But it's Winkler Middle School currently feeds this very small group of students, and they're the only students from Winkler that attend Concord. I know it's like under like 4%, but I can't remember the exact number.
It's about 17 students on the map.
14. It's 14 students according to Francis.
That's not gonna affect Concord, like losing a teacher because of, we're moving these students out?
Uh, I don't, we don't, I mean, we're so far away from the allocations for teachers. We wouldn't know that until.
I just hate to see them lose a teacher because of this move. Just hold me with questions. The big one, I guess, goes to the middle school realignment. And I guess my big thing is, why can we not use Northwest as part of this redistricting? If you could go over the reasons again for that?
Yeah, a couple of reasons. One is, one is I'll say that the growth metrics in that area of the county right now are flat, are relatively flat. We know that they're poised for a lot of development over time. As you all know, developments can take anywhere from two years to 15 years to develop. We still have some developments on the map from the recession back in 2008 that were started then and approved then, but still haven't manifest into a full neighborhood yet. So, so one, it's in numbers. We're projecting them to be flat over time. The other, the other piece is that the Northwest Cabarrus High School is, is to be built and open right now based on the budget timeline that we have the county in 2026. So we feel like any, that any growth that we have in the area can be absorbed through the expansion of Northwest Cabarrus High School, which is about 400 seats. And then subsequently, the former Northwest Cabarrus High School gets remodeled and becomes the new Northwest Cabarrus Middle School with an expansion of approximately 300 seats. So that, the timeline really lines us up with growth in that area and our capital plan, they really align really, really well.
Yeah, so essentially, we're not moving any Northwest, or can't move any Northwest students. There's not a whole lot of other students to move except for what's been recommended to us.
Right. And we're not providing enough, the relief that we need at the schools that we needed at, if we move those students.
And so you're gonna move it down to 87%, is what the estimated?
Let me double check. Yeah, it's 87 or 88. Let me just double check that.
Versus the, I guess, the Green Plus Plan that the Board had got, got to hear from over the last couple of weeks, it was at 97%?
That's correct, yes.
There's really nothing else we can, I mean, obviously, transportation is, is an issue for that, that community as they've expressed. But I think we've had Mr. Whitaker talk to us about safety and his concerns or his thought process on it being a safe route, that we have dozens of school buses that transfer, say, 85 every day. So it shouldn't be a safety issue there, it is a time issue. But I mean, I don't know what else you can, what else you can do if you've gotta move students.
Right. And the evaluation, when we put them side by side, the evaluation of the, the options, actually the IPT recommendation is slightly more efficient. However, it's, it's minimal in terms of comparison there is.
Yeah, I don't think we're moving anyone else even close to that distance, even to the new schools. But I mean, that's unfortunate. And it's, it's troubling that we're, you know, obviously, communities have been established in that, at that school, in that school for a long period of time. And because of the growth that we have, maybe easy just to, it'd be nice to be able to just move people that haven't been moved in yet, but there's not enough people, is that correct? Is that why we don't do that type of?
That's great. It just does not give us the, the capacity relief that we need.
Okay, that's all I got of this trip.
Thank you.
Ms. Blackwell?
Sure. So one of the things that I would love, Art's on the phone, right? See him not?
He don't make it?
Oh. I wanted him to go down the laundry list of all of the schools that actually do crossover 85. It was, you know all of them?
Not all off the top of my head.
Because he rattled them off like nothing.
About two minutes, I could dig it up and tell you, but.
But it was a lot.
It is a lot.
It was, it was a lot of kids that, that cross over a highway to get to their school. So I did wanna point that out.
Yeah, I mean, I know a few of those. So I know Wyancoff, Bogart, Northwest Middle, Northwest Cabarrus High School, all of our choice hub stop programs.
McKinney-Vento.
McKinney-Vento students, yes.
Yeah. It was a lot of children. And I would like for you, Brian, if you don't mind, to kinda point out too, some of the other safety things that we had previously talked about that were not being taken in account as far as if we had to put all of those trailers.
Well, I'll just say, I think, I think today is, is a good example. So whenever we have an inclement weather incident, we have to move students from mobile units into the, the physical building, the hard structure building. And so we did that just today. So it's a good example. So, you know, the more students that you have outdoors, and that's following code and that's being compliant with what we're supposed to do, and it's also the safest thing for students. So anytime we have that type of event, we have to make sure that we have safe capacity away from windows in the interior of our building in order to do that. So, so it's, I mean, again, today was a perfect example of that. And the more students that you have out in a mobile unit, the more you have to do that. And then you have to ensure that you have space inside of the physical building that are safe spaces where if glass breaks out, then students are impacted by that. So it's a, that, that's probably the best and most recent example I could give you.
So I just wanted to say, you know, thank you, everyone, so much for all of the work that you put into this. I know that it has been very grueling since September to go through all of these maps, these plans. And, and it's, it's a huge undertaking. And I'm grateful for people, like I said before, like Francis, who likes math, because that is just not my thing. And, and I also wanna give a shout out to all of the parents out there who've been so involved in helping us with this because they have really taken their plan and, and, you know, made us really look, take a deeper dive into what our initial thoughts were. And so that has been great, I think, for everyone as a whole. We all have the best interest of, of the children at heart and trying to make this entire county be in a place where the, the schools are not overcrowded, the kids are getting the best education possible. So again, I just, I thank everyone for all of the hard work that you've done.
Ms. Sandage?
So if you can give me a minute, I've kinda had dreams about this. It's, it's woken me up at night. I truly don't like to see any child affected negatively or potentially negatively based on their interpretation or the interpretation that's being put in front of them. So I wanted to just kinda recap some of the things that I have thought about in this process.
Is now joining.
I'm hearing a background. Okay. So one of the things that I've thought about and that's helped me to understand where I should be in this process has been the demographics that we have at our school, the diversity that we have at our school, which being the only person of color on this Board is very important to me. I like to see those things happening in our community, and they are happening with this plan. And I want to see that continue. Just future impact as a whole for our community. I speak a lot about community. That's important to me as a social worker. I truly appreciate the advocacy of the parents or the communities that have come out and talked to us.
Is now exiting.
Ms. Sandage, you go ahead and continue.
Okay. Brian, I truly appreciate your involvement in this and everybody that has worked on this process to make sure that we take into account not only what the IPT is seeing, but also what our community is seeing. I think that's very vital in making us a better district as a whole. So I truly appreciate that. The other thing that I took into account, and people really don't think about this, is, you know, I always had, had this impression of the Board as a parent on the other side looking over here. And it looks so much different being here as a Board member now. And I think people have to keep that in perspective. And I wish I would've known that then because maybe I wouldn't have come to the Board on so many occasions to talk to you guys. You know, so that changes my perspective about things because there are truly decisions that we have to make as a Board that we truly don't like and don't understand. You know, I don't understand that as a parent. You know what I mean? It looks different. So just, that's another thing that I had to take into account. And I said this during my campaign, and this is probably gonna make a few more people laugh, but, you know, I always used to tell my husband, you know, he'll try to fix something at home, and I'm just like, no, don't do it. Let the professionals do it. You know, because we're gonna be spending more money than we need to if we are doing it ourselves. That's how I look at it. I know that's Lozer Home Depot's tagline. But I'm, I'm truly one who likes to use the professionals. Last thing I'm gonna end on is an email that I received today. And it truly sums up kinda where I was, you know, because I had this conversation with my husband in the car on the way home today. And it's just like, you know, it, it really tells what I feel is where I'm at. It says, "I hope this email finds you well, even though I'm sure you're trying to dig through a heaping pile of emails. I spent a great deal of time contemplating what I could say in an email that you hadn't already heard 1,000 times. Bless you all for stepping into a role such as this and thinking about all I've watched, heard, and studied over the last six months leading up to today's vote." Something that I keep coming back to was the comment that change isn't necessarily bad and that we shouldn't be teaching our children that change is bad. I don't believe that's what our community has been doing. In contrast, I believe we've shown our children so many positives. One, we've shown them what can happen when a community comes together. Our community, regardless of race, gender, wealth, came together as a whole to work on a common cause. We've shown them that it's okay to have a voice. We've shown them that it's okay to ask you to vote and to hear your voice. You have all shown them that you are listening. We are all listening. They're referring to the Board, so they know we're listening. We've shown them that adults in their lives will show up for them time and time again, no matter how many times they are told no or how many times more iterations of a plan need to be made or adjusted. We've shown them that it's okay to compromise to reach greater good for all. I truly appreciated that email. And I truly appreciated the opportunity for children to see their parents fight for them and for those very parents to know that we are listening to them. That's what I signed up to do here, and I truly appreciate that. That's all I have.
Ms. Carpenter? Ms. Carpenter, are you still with us? She may have. Okay. Ms. Carpenter, if you can hear us, you may be muted. Okay, while we're waiting on that, actually, I know Ms. Blackwell and Mr. Walter, you actually sat on the realignment committee. I would like to have a comment from you based on your experience as a committee member.
Well, I can tell you that.
Carolyn Carpenter.
Ms. Carpenter, can you hear me?
Oh, she left.
Go ahead, Ms. Blackwell.
Okay. So sitting on this committee was very interesting because seeing this process from just kinda the infancy of it, starting in September and where, how far we had come. You know, first of all, I just admire the people that are good with these numbers and can calculate this stuff and just bear with us when we ask all of these questions that may sound kinda stupid sometimes. But, you know, it's just because I can't wrap my head around some of these things. But we started out with a tremendous number of maps and information and just listening to them and, and trying to make heads or tails of the best decision. It's just, it's more than I've ever been involved in as far as starting from the beginning of a realignment process, I feel like. And so it, it was really nice to see and just, it allows me to speak to the due diligence that the, the folks that were part of the IPT.
Carolyn Carpenter.
Have taken in order to make sure that we're, we're doing the best possible plan for the community in the best way that we can. And so just in that aspect, I feel like they have been very, they were very thorough with the maps and the numbers and just trying to align everything the best way possible without having any more kids than necessary have to be, have to be moved or transported elsewhere. So those are my thoughts on, on that process.
Mr. Walter?
My hats are actually off to the committee. We had great participation, at least the meetings that I attended. Again, I've worked for a full-time job. Those meetings are held during the middle of the day, so sometimes it's hard for me to attend, even in a full meeting. But from the parts that I did get to see, you had a great representation from all the principals, all the key people on staff. And they seem to have free discussion, free questions and answers and bringing up stuff, I think specifically the program choice stuff that the consultant really wouldn't know about. That's, that was good, good facilitation. And then the principals who know the, know their communities, know their students. So that part of the discussion, discussions that I was part of, I was very impressed with. And then Francis Lane, very, I mean, she's very talented, knows what she's doing, knows her stuff. And my hats are off to her. Thank you.
Ms. Carpenter, can you hear us?
Yes, do you hear me?
I can now. So.
Okay.
I'm not, I'm not sure.
Huh?
I'm not sure where we lost you, but we're, we are doing comments and questions regarding the realignment. Do you have anything?
Yeah, well, I call, I was hearing y'all, and, and I tried to say something. First of all, I wanna thank everybody that, staff that participated and parents that participated. And I do have my concerns, which I have stated numerous times, the problems with the, you know, going over the interstates, the turns that are made. I still have my concerns with, you know, the distances that are having to be traveled. I still really wish that, that both sides could get back together. The parents that are on 73 North and the parents that are on the other side get back together and still work together to come up with a plan that both sides could compromise to get the, to get Harris Road at a lower, you know, know, lower than the ninety-eight percent. I really wish that could be worked lower. Again, I know that there was so many of those maps. I can't believe that we can't come up with something even better than the Blue Plan, that there couldn't be a better plan that could be worked out and keep hammering this out and come up with something even better. You know, the, you know, this is the first time out of all this time, I've been through numerous, numerous redistricting. And I don't think we've ever seen a group of parents bring a redistricting plan to us. And I was very impressed with that. And we've had people come to us and say, take my subdivision out or take mine out. But to come up with such an intense plan, I was very impressed, very impressed. And so I am still, like I say, really, was really hoping that we would see more compromise and more working together with everybody to come up with something that we could all live with. And that's, that's where I come from.
Thank you. So Brian, before she had went off, she had asked, why not use Northwest Cabarrus Middle School for the relief of Harris Road? And you, she, you answered that when you were talking with, can you just reiterate what you said?
Same response to Mr. Walter is that the, it just does not get us to the reduction in capacity that we need to handle the growth that we know is there right now, that the places that have been approved and the development that we know have evidence of that is, that is taking place in, in, in the Harris Road community.
So hearing that, do you have any other responses that you would like to state?
No, I just, again, I like to reiterate some of the, I've learned a lot through this process. And I think, you know, anytime that I get questions from the board, questions from the community, it causes always, my first reaction is always to be reflective. You know, I think, I think I learned a lot a long time ago on how to get defensive and, and kind of fight back. I thank my parents for that. But, so I always look at reflective, what could I have done better? What, what could we as a team have looked better? And it causes to, anytime that there's something that's counter to what's being offered, it causes us to go back and dig in the data, reexamine, ask questions. You know, and I think that the proof of that is, you know, looking at the, the amount of time that we extended this, the opportunities that we had to take visits to the community, the, the additional information, public information session that we had to really give it due diligence to make sure that we covered all our bases in that. And I think the seventeen iterations or so of the plans that we have and going back to the drawing board when different, when different plans were proposed, I think that was all healthy. And it was, it was a long and grueling process, and I said it that way. But I think it was all healthy to be able to go back and be reflective and then, and then put, you know, we cleaned up feeder patterns and, you know, impacted fewer students because of all those things. So we, this is a much better plan because of the thousand-plus items that we got of feedback during this process. So, you know, I'm very thankful and very grateful for that.
Which included all those parents that participated as well.
Absolutely.
And I agree, you know, I've been involved with several myself and Mr. Fur as well. And, you know, it has been an absolutely due diligence period for everyone that we've never been through. You know, the parents did a fantastic job, the staff did a great job, and we really do appreciate it. It truly has been trying for all and a learning curve for many. So with that being said, I'll take a motion that the.
Just one second.
I'm sorry?
Just one second. That process hasn't ended because we asked you for additional information over the weekend that you got to us as well. So I just wanted to kind of point that out. We have literally like put every single effort we could into this process and we've sent a thousand questions even as of last week that you answered this weekend. So yeah, we've really done, we, all we could.
Okay. So with that being said, I'll take a motion that the IPT realignment recommendation be approved as presented April 12th, 2021.
So moved.
I have a motion. I need a second.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No. And this is Carolyn Carpenter.
Thank you, Ms. Carpenter. Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I do want to, if I can tell everyone the next steps on this because it does not end now. The, the work is, is about communication at this point. So just, just so you know, over the next month, there will be some broad communications that go out about this. And then the, the map that everybody accesses to, to find their, their school, that will be updated to reflect what you just approved. So you'll, what, and we'll announce this, this will go out. So it's put, be pushed out to the community that people will be able to see what their current school is, what next year's school is. But then the twenty, starting with the 2023 school year, they'll be able to know what their school is based on that map. And then once the school, because we don't want to cross school years and get people confused, once next school year starts, then we'll begin individual communication. So all of the, all of the students that are impacted by this, there'll be an individual communication that will go to their homes about their student assignment. And that will happen prior to program choice in October. So what we don't want to do is shut anybody out from that after program choice is closed and say, oh, by the way, you don't forget you're going to so-and-so. So we're going to inform them prior to, to that program choice process. So, so the work does not end on this just because we voted and approved it tonight. The communication has just, just really begun on that. So, and that'll be a large, a, a large group of folks in administrative services that will be carrying out that task. So thank you all.
Great. Thank you.
Brian, we did get that request to consider seventh, was it seventh graders as well? Is that even a possibility?
I think that's something we'll continue to monitor, that, that we can do that. So, you know, we, we can, prior to, once we know 40-day enrollment, that will help us know and understand what we can or cannot do with that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Brian. Okay, now we will move to our added items, nine point zero two. And I need a motion to approve the North Carolina School Association to initiate the process for superintendent search.
Same.
I have a motion by Ms. Blackwell.
Is now exiting.
Second by Ms. Sandage.
Can someone say what that involves?
What we've talked about. And actually, you've got an email that's going to be sent to you that will have all the criteria in it.
Okay. That was not part of that call.
No, it's actually in an email. So you, you got it this afternoon.
Okay, hold on.
So I have a motion by Ms. Blackwell, a second by Ms. Sandage. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. And then we have added nine point zero three to advertise, advertise an RFP for legal services. May I have a motion, please?
Same.
I have a motion by Ms. Blackwell. Second by Ms. Adcock.
When was the last time we did the RFP?
You were on the board, so you tell me.
I can't remember. Four years ago?
Ms. Plutz, would you like to tell us? Seventeen? Okay.
So this is something we do every four years?
So it would be three. And it's just their contract is, it states by board policy that we have to make this decision in May. So at this point in time, RFP is the only route that we can go.
Okay.
Okay. So, and I'm sorry, motion by Ms. Blackwell, second by Ms. Adcock. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, board members, any other comments or questions? Hearing none, I will ask for a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
By Ms. Blackwell, second by Mr. Walter. All those in favor, say aye. Thank you. And with that, thank you. And with that, we will say good night to our viewing audience. Thank you for joining us. And we look forward to seeing you next Monday night on May the 10th for the Cabarrus County Board of Education's work session. I'm sorry, business meeting. And good night. Thank you.